I think we're all here now. I call this meeting to order for the Bethany City Council, Tuesday, October 17th, 2017. Would you please rise for our prayer that will be given by Councilmember John Heron and our pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Phil Shirey.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for protecting us through this week, Lord. We just pray you just to be upon us tonight as we make decisions going forth for the city, Lord. Give us wisdom and guidance as we sit here tonight. We just pray for protection over our city. Amen. Amen.
Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two.
Item one, tonight's consent docket, A through H. And I believe I have a question, but I also know that Councilmember Todd has a question.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question on number, page 18, which would be the monthly court report. To me, that, that report doesn't tell me anything. It doesn't say if this is money coming in or money going out. There's no way on this report to differentiate. And so, I'd like to have it looked at in the future to, if you look at page 18 there, it just, it just numbers. It's not telling you anything at all. And so, maybe I, maybe I'm not seeing it right. But, that's item number one. Item number two is page 16 of 68. If you look at there, the purchase of gas mask, and I asked Steve Harsman a few minutes ago about that, that purchase, and I said, if you look at the top, it says capital improvement fund, but it's obviously a police purchase. So, why was it purchased out of capital improvement as opposed to police funds? And he tells me, it's from the drug seizure. I said, well, looking at the report, how, how are we supposed to know this? And so, maybe I'm nitpicking it, but I, maybe I don't understand. So, I'm looking for a little guidance here.
Okay, we will certainly follow up on the capital improvement purchase. Our Director of Court Services, Stacy Peck, is here. I'll let her answer your first question.
Thank you.
The court report was started actually before I was here, but what it shows is your revenues. It does-
Show some fines and forfeitures, jail fees, things like that. If you would like for me to put revenue on there, I can. Juvenile fine is actually a receivable that goes strictly to juvenile programs that we have to do. Cleet, AFIS, and forensic, those are all fees that we pay to the state that are required by state statute. Revenue or costs, all of that, that's something that we keep here. OSBI is any fees that we pay to them regarding fingerprints, anything like that, drug-
Yeah, I'm not challenging where the money's going. I'm saying, looking at the report from my side of the table, you can't tell if that's income or outgoing.
Okay.
And so, some way we need to differentiate what's, what is what here.
I can definitely do that.
Thank you.
We can redo.
What about the second question? Did you get it?
Yeah, we will follow up on that. We'll get back with you.
So, do we vote for it to be in the wrong category? I mean, if it's wrong, maybe there's an actual P and R, like an account system where to pull out of that account? Shouldn't pull out of the account? Do you have an opinion on that?
On the account?
Yeah, on Curtis's question.
Well, it was actually Mr. Todd's question, but I mean, if we vote on it, it's gonna pull out of the wrong account.
Well, you also find the same thing at page 15, where we're buying pistol target lights, and, and that's not out of the police fund. And I'm going like, okay, are we, are we buying stuff but not being charged against the police account? Because it clearly says that non-departmental at the top of the page.
Page 12 is police expenditures.
Well, I'd say if it's being paid in the wrong account, you probably should defer it until it comes from the right account, but I, I don't know whether it is or not.
We'll certainly follow up on those two items.
Back to your question. What do we do with it? So, do we vote for him or not?
I always thought, I always thought that non-departmental funds came from grants and from other special funding, that they weren't part of the budgeted funds. And so, if this is coming from drug funds, like the library money is coming from the bond, that's usually listed as non-departmental. So, they don't go against the budget for that particular department. They're from grants.
Well, Mr. Harsman told me when I asked him earlier, he said that, that's from drug seizure money. I said, well, how is one supposed to know that, looking at the printout?
I was questioning whether gas masks is a capital improvement or not, so, so, maybe it's best to pull those two items and get a report back on that.
Okay. So, we pull page 15 and page 16?
Are those two claims that you mentioned?
Yes, those are two pages.
Two pages or two items?
Well, the-
Which, which one are they on here?
I have it on my page. It's just the page number, according to my-
Well, aren't there several claims on there though?
Yes.
There's two on the one.
Oh, I see. You want the claim-
Yeah, just, just take, state the claims you want deferred.
Okay, alright, I'll pull that.
Because otherwise, those other people aren't gonna get paid.
Well, you know, the, the gas mask is on page seven in my set of, in my set of expenses. It says capital improvement fund, page seven, summary report.
Actually, he's working off of the original agenda, and he's working off of the amended agenda. That's why he's got a different page number than he's got, because that's where we started out, and then we went back to the original agenda and found his notes that he took. So, that's why we've got different page numbers.
But Steve, would the claim number be the same?
The, the claim numbers would be the same, yes.
Yeah, I think list the claim numbers you're deferring.
And we're talking about the page number-
Are we talking about the PO?
We're talking about the page number in the upper right-hand corner of the page, correct?
Yes, sir.
That says page seven.
That's page seven. And it's, it's, it's PO number 18-26.
Yep.
It's getting so small in here, the old man can hardly see it.
Twenty-six.
Euro fourteen.
Yeah.
Is that the one you're speaking?
That is correct. Yes, sir, that's the first one. The second one was eighteen dash two six one three one.
On what page?
Well, on mine, it's page-
Page six.
Eighty-six?
Six.
Six, okay.
Had to write it on top of the page.
Mm-hmm. Says public safety funds.
Yeah, that's coming, that's coming out of the public safety fund.
And that's where we dump all the change in there that we don't appropriate, is that correct?
The first one, the adventure out and all of that, the pistol stuff, that's all coming out of the public safety fund. So, that's all going, that's police department, coming out of the police department fund. Very top of the page to the left.
Public safety is just police?
In this case, it is, yes.
Public safety is fire.
Well, then, why wouldn't it be listed under the police account?
Well, I don't know that public safety isn't a police account.
Well, there's another thing that says police account on it.
It may have to do with the source of the funds.
One is budgeted police account, the other is the drugs fund that is not part of the budget.
Which is grant money.
I think the public safety fund is a, is an extraneous source of funding, like a seized, seizure property, that sort of thing.
Don't, don't funds from impoundments go in that place also?
They very well may. I'm, I'm not sure. I'd have to look at the budget to see.
We need to get, we need to find out, probably get a report on what, somebody does know where-
So, we'll, we'll have that for you for, for next time, if you want to pull those two items. So, it'd be the gas mask from page seven and the pistols from page six.
Hey, I, I would, as being a businessman all my life, I'd like to get paid, and I imagine these people would be too, since, since we kick it around up here and we all understand what went on, I think we ought to pay them.
Well, and this is being charged to the police chief's credit card, so, I'm assuming that if it isn't, well, it probably has been paid, but if it isn't paid, then we're going to have credit charges.
So, we'll, we'll check with the Finance Director tomorrow, and if you all would like to go ahead and pay it, you could approve it, and we'll make sure it's corrected, and then we'll, we'll notify you the correct account.
That's a Bethany credit card, is that right? It's not a personal credit card, is that right?
Yes.
City credit card.
Just like if I buy gas at 7-Eleven.
Right.
That is correct.
I think you can go ahead and pay it, and if it's found there's a mistake, then that could be brought to you, back to you next time, with a corrected page in the claims list to be ratified.
At the very least, we need to rename some accounts, so it's easier to understand.
For, for small minds like mine.
For requiring minds like you, we need to rename it.
Mr. Mayor, those are the only questions I had, with no further ado, I would make a motion to accept.
I have, I have, I just want to know something. I, number, not to harp on it or anything, item F, can somebody explain what that refers to?
Yes, each year, well, let me back up. So, the city council approves ordinances throughout the year, and then, once a year, we send those ordinances away to be, the term is called codify. When we codify ordinances, that mean we, that means that we put them into either a book of, of ordinances, which is otherwise known as the city code, or what's been done in more recent times that we're utilizing more and more of, is putting it online in the city code. So, this is a resolution to approve, sending away the ordinances that you have approved this past year, and to have them codified.
And item H, is that a standard practice?
Yes.
Yes, that is a standard practice.
Okay.
If we're gonna discuss these and not poll them, we might as well discuss them. The public improvement routine items, like I said, I've never seen them placed, just many things placed on, on a consent docket. But, I mean, these, I just don't want these things to just disappear without us talking about them a little bit. I mean, these, these are examples, again, of the problems we've had in the past of, of asking for forgiveness instead of permission. And I just want to make sure everybody is on board, because we've done it for years and decades, of building a building on top of a water line is a good case, or doing something without submitting a plan, or getting a site plan approved and just doing it. I just want to make sure that, that everybody realizes that the next time an accident comes up where a building's built without a building permit, it doesn't just fly right by.
That's right.
So.
I might explain what the significance of these items is. I don't know anything about these particular water lines, but the purpose is, these lines have already been approved and built, and the contractor is required to submit a maintenance bond, guaranteeing that against defects in labor and materials for probably a two-year period on a water line or sewer line. This action officially places that bond into effect and starts that period running. So, these are routinely placed on your agenda, so there's a record of when the bond starts to run, in case there's a problem.
Right.
Three hundred and sixty-five days from a year later, so, that's the purpose of these items, being on the agenda. You're not really approving the water line or allowing it to be installed. It's already been installed, the city has inspected it, and they're recommending that that maintenance bond be placed in effect.
I, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, I'm just saying that I believe it was built incorrectly and then finally accepted, is all I'm saying. If that's the right, if I'm thinking right, these are one of the problems that's been dragging out for quite some time, if I remember correctly. That's all I'm trying to make sure.
Well, only recent, only recently, we have started seeing more of these items on the consent docket. Before, we were seeing these items as a separate item on the agenda. And that's where you're getting it confusing, because I think that we, you know, we have the approval of minutes, that's a, that's a routine thing, but some of these other things in here that, that maybe we're not, we're not addressing, and all these public improvements, excepting of the water mains, have, have been, have always been placed as a separate, separate item on the, on the agenda. And I would like to see that continued. We have item G here, that was always, so we could bring it up and discuss it, and say how much we thought of the person that we were asking to take this fee, this, this job.
That's risky right here.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, Mr. Mayor, then, in that respect, I'd like to ask Mr. Davis a question on, is there a reason why H is brought to us? Because that, we, we've seen that multiple times before. If this money belongs to this person, why does the council have to vote to give him money?
Because the plan requires you to approve it. It's not mandatory that you grant a lump sum payment. You have the authority under the plan to refuse that, if you chose to. And that would mean, assuming he's not of retirement age, and if he's vested, he could be required to wait until at least age fifty-five to get any money. But, I think what, I think what you're-
If it's his money, just give him it.
The city contributed to it as well, as if he's vested.
Do not, we, we, we contribute some funds to that, do we not?
Yes, we do.
So, it's us trying to take care of our people. I mean, there, you know, there may be, there may be a mistake made. I mean, I hope that the young, the young man has been told that he's got some, well, I read the narrative on that, and he, he does not. He's been informed, and he's going to, he's going to roll it into an IRA, which is, which is very understandable.
I do like the extra step, though, because it does give him an extra step to think about the taxes, the consequences, because I don't think most people roll it. Rolling it's a good thing.
Ultimately, the OMRF, which is the retirement board, or the retirement people, require you as the board to say, yes, it's okay to do it. So, even if you say yes every time, you are still required to do it by their bylaws. So, that's why you have to do it.
You know, this is one of those things that sometimes you protect people themselves, and that a lot of people, you know, get, have the opportunity to take a distribution, a lump sum distribution, and it's all of their retirement savings. They take it in a lump sum, and first thing you know, they buy a boat, a car, and a travel trailer, and their retirement funds are gone, you know, and you do have the authority under the plan to not allow that. Now, this gentleman sounds like he's rolling it into an IRA, which, you know, is virtually the same thing, but, you know, that's why you have the discretion on whether to approve or not approve, because you do have, do have an investment in the retirement funds.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move approval of the consent docket.
Go second.
I'll second that.
Please cast your votes. Item two, although it says three, approved resolution number fourteen eighty to accept the Library Committee recommendations, including updated budget and authorization to proceed with additional design work. Do we have a report?
We do have a report. We promised to keep you updated on the library building, and you can see that at least it's been leveled and there's dirtwork being done. But, we now have a Library Committee that you report, that you appointed, of Jeff Knapp, Curtis Moore, Robert McCutcheon, and myself. And so, we met on October 5th, and we unanimously agreed to make the following recommendations to the city council that you are seeing tonight. After the construction bid was awarded, we realized that we had additional funds that could be allocated for the projects that we wanted to do. We had had charrettes among people in the community, they had told us what they wanted in playgrounds and gazebos and various improvements on the property, but as we were putting the budget together, we didn't know if we'd have enough money to even build the library. So, what we essentially did was have a Phase One, which was the library, and then a Phase Two, where we put these other projects, realizing that we were taking away the playground that had been there, and some of the parkland, and just hoping that we could put it back. So, having these additional funds, we now are able to offer what we consider giving back to the community what they ask. On the sheet that is highlighted, that is in each of your packets, you can see the proposal that was made by Todd Elberding, who is here tonight and can answer your questions. He has been our project director on this project, and has done an amazing job for us. So, 1A, as it is listed, is just showing where the money has been moved, that has been transferred, and we've, in 1A, we really repaid the city for expenses that were made at the beginning of the campaign, before we had the bond money. Then, 1B is the sage glass. Several of you have come up to me and said, what is sage glass? So, that will not come to you until the November twenty-one agenda, but while we were at the Moore Recreation Center, we pushed the button that darkened the glass. And so, on the right, you see the day that we were looking at before we pushed that button, and it darkened the other windows. So, that's saving money that we would have spent, or might have spent, on awnings and shades and blinds and other things within the library, and allows us to just have this button in the workroom area where staff will push it. It won't be kids running around and pushing it all the time, but it does allow the, the windows to darken, and it's a really nice feature. So, that will be coming back to you, excuse me, at the November twenty-one meeting. And then, the next thing is 1C, we did the soil tests, remember you approved those a few weeks ago, and that was just not as serious, so there will be credits on that amount, and you won't have the expense that we thought might exist there. Then, the next thing I want to talk to you about is some of the amenities that were talked about during the charrette, says the public met and told us what they wanted at the library. Some of these you have already seen, and I just put them at spaces on this map, it may not be where they end up, but the orange-looking square is the space that has been designated for public art. Normally, public art has allocated one percent of the budget. So, in our case, we have allocated sixty-five thousand dollars for public art, and that will be at the entrance to the property. On the north, you can see Northwest twenty, or Thirty-Fifth Street. Then, you'll pull into the parking lot above it. You see the parking lot, the white area is the library, the gray is the pond, and it's being enlarged then, so it will wrap around the library to the south and can have more detention pond there. Then, as we go back to the top of the parking lot, to the right, that tan area is shown as playground, but really, that still needs to remain as flood plain. So, we have moved the playground further up the hill, so to speak, and the, the purple or bluish-looking oval is the spot that we have been talking about for the playground. Now, when design actually happens, these may all move, but it will give you a feel for the kind of space we have and where these areas might be. Then, we are recommending that the parking lot, that is where the tower, police tower is, where the police building, I guess, used to be, that parking lot will be great space for the playground and for the people who come out and walk on the trails and bring their dogs, and, and it won't take away from the library parking lot, which you know is always cramped in spite of the fact that we have allocated enough space for what is recommended. So, we are asking you to look at improving that parking lot, so it can be more usable. Every plan that you probably saw over the months that they were on the floor in the, what we call the fishbowl, every one of those plans had a gazebo. And as we were doing the charrette, and Danell Wrightson was here talking with us, everybody wanted some kind of a gazebo, some kind of a performance space. So, we have suggested a gazebo be put up in that playground area, and then, the next thing that we're talking about is a restroom, primarily for people who bring children there, who are jogging early in the morning, walking their dogs at times that the library won't be open. So, I can briefly go back over those, or if you have any questions, we'll be glad to answer them.
There's, there's a lot of unknowns on here.
Mm-hmm.
How can we possibly vote on this without having any information?
What we're asking you to vote on tonight is allocating the funds that we have already set aside and talked about for the playground equipment, and this is designed to be an all-abilities playground. So, handicapped children, able-bodied children, everyone can play together on this playground. And with the closeness of these children's center and others in our community who are autistic and have special needs, this will be designed for all abilities, but will be the only one in Bethany that is specifically designed for all-abilities children. The, so that's just setting aside that money that we've already set aside, the four hundred thousand dollars, for the development of a plan for the playground. That will come back to you before you approve it. But, right now, we need to know, are we just replacing a swing set and a, you know, teeter-totter, or are we doing a full-blown playground? The public art RFP, we have set aside sixty-five thousand dollars for that. The Bethany Improvement Foundation has saved another twenty-five thousand dollars that has been donated for this project. And so, we are ready to go out to artists for an RFP, a request for proposals, that they will then respond to. We have a seven-member board that will be vetting that art and meeting with the artists- We have a seven-member board that will be vetting that art and meeting with the artists and then will bring the recommendation back to you. This art includes an exterior art piece that is at the designated site at the entrance to the park area. And then also a wall that is sixty-five feet long and six and a half feet high inside the building that will be a major wall to look at when you walk into the building. So those are the two sets of projects and the monies that you saw back July twenty-fifth when we presented the plan and these amounts of money. The following, two A, two B, and two C, are projects that we talked about during the proposal, during the public meetings. These are some of the more popular things that the public said they wanted outside of the library, but we didn't think we would have the money to do it. Now that we have the money to do it, then this is an opportunity to provide those, to provide the additional parking, to provide the all-abilities playground, and to apply or provide a gazebo for some kind of entertainment. And here, we're not talking about major entertainment like a garage band or whatever. It might be someone just drumming a guitar or singing, but not where it would be a noise problem in the community.
Dr. Arlita, the sage glass, can you remind me what the cost of that would be?
I don't think we know that yet.
Okay, so we're giving you approval?
No, you're not giving approval on that. That will come back to you on November twenty-one.
Okay.
I'm just showing you tonight what it will look like.
All right. And then the proposal for the playground equipment, the estimated budget would be four hundred thousand dollars?
We, I've given that as an estimate of a good amount to work with to provide a, I mean, I've looked at various playground proposals and they range from three hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. And so four hundred thousand seemed like a good price to work with. And they need to know, the committee that's been working on this needs to know what we want. If we tell them, you know, fifty thousand dollars, we're going to get fifty thousand dollars. But if we say, "We can work within four hundred thousand, see what you can do for that and bring it back." We have not told anyone we're working with that amount, but the committee needs to know so we can keep it in range.
And for the public's interest, the total amount that was left over that we are considering, what is that amount?
Around, it's less than a million.
I think where you can, where you can...
Coming up, right.
I'm Todd Oberding, for those of you that don't know me. You still don't know me, but you know my name now, so. The, the funding for the library that we have available for the project is reflected in that column called Budget there. And so if you go down that list of items there, you'll see how the funding that was secured from the bond package is distributed. And because those line items were estimates, and many of them still remain estimates, the estimate for the park equipment is still an estimate, until we actually bring those back to the City Council for approval, similar to the, the contract for Shiloh to build the project and to award that contract, we don't really have fixed dollars on a lot of these things here.
So is it fair to say we don't know exactly how much it's going to cost to build the library?
Uh, we know how much the building is going to cost.
How much is that?
It's, his, well, his contract, Shiloh's contract is under building park in sight there. His contract is five million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
So six million dollars?
Yes.
And then the bond issue was for eight point eight million dollars?
No, eight point one eight. The eight point eight that you see at the bottom also includes about seven hundred thousand dollars that was provided by the library system to pay for architectural design fees.
Okay, so in essence, the bond issue was two million dollars over the cost of the library. Is that fair?
Uh, no, that's not fair because there's a lot of things that are not included in the building cost that, that have to come out of that eight million dollars. So for example, there's legal costs that are involved in, throughout the project. There's testing costs, there's material that's required for that, there's...
Well, I guess my question is, what is the remaining balance that can be considered by the City Council to pay for these additional projects? Can you give me a number?
Uh, well, this column on the right-hand side here shows that we have set aside four hundred thousand dollars for the park equipment. Do you see that there?
I see that.
And the bond issue, how much was the bond issue approved?
Maybe I could help.
Eight million, one eighty.
Well, we are on a trajectory to be some eight hundred thousand dollars plus or minus under budget, possibly nine hundred thousand.
That is included, the gazebo, the...
That does not include that, but that, that's what is being proposed tonight, is that permission be given so they could go out for design work to find out what, what that would, would cost, but all that would be under budget.
We've got four hundred thousand in here for the playground equipment.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And that's, that's in the figure that was just thrown out here.
Yes, sir.
So tonight, we, the Bethany, the City of Bethany residents, in the bond issue, there is nine hundred thousand dollars available for these additional projects. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's right.
So tonight, we're considering what we're going to do with that nine hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, I think we're going to take a step in understanding that. The first step is for us to secure some design services from an architect who can sit down with the Library Committee to understand what does a gazebo mean to them, what does the restroom look like, and to put together some cost proposals for us.
Right, and I appreciate that. So we're, we're trying to figure out how we're going to spend an additional nine hundred thousand dollars.
Yes. Now, that's almost a million dollars.
I don't actually think it's going to be that high. And I, I also would like to share with you that under the construction environments, we have a construction contingency line item that is, that we have set aside by law ten percent of the construction cost. And if you're familiar with that process, that's to cover things that were oversights in the design that we didn't pick up or what have you, minor things that are going to happen on any project.
What's that specific amount? Ten percent of eight million?
No, it's ten percent of the construction cost of the construction contract.
Five, five million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
Five, seven, yes.
So ten percent of that has been set aside for change orders, issues related to whatever...
Whatever, dirt, concrete, steel, windows, the sage glass.
And we've already seen some of that back because the soil tested better than we thought it would test. So we're, we're looking at a positive there someplace. I, I can't, I can't see right now, we don't, we have an incomplete idea of what we're going to be spending on this project totally.
Well, and that begs the question, why are we doing this now? We don't have a library, we don't know if we're going to go above the five hundred thousand dollar cost overruns or whatever we would need in order to complete the library. Is there an answer to that?
I, I think that there is. I mean, I think that the money that's been set aside for the construction contract and the, the ten percent contingency for the construction work, I think is going to be more than adequate to pay for that. My personal feeling is that I think that we will probably only use about three percent of that ten percent.
Well, I can't predict the future, can you?
Well, no, but we have to have faith that we're, we have done this before and we've worked with the architect who has built libraries before and we've looked at the drawings and we've been working with the contractor on a daily basis.
This is statutory, this ten percent statutory. I don't think we have anything to say about that. But you're saying, we're going to, we're going to maybe make this for three percent of fifty-seven, of five, seven, five, seven, and three percent, or, or three percent of five, seven is about one eight.
Would it be fair to say, and I'm not saying it's wrong...
Which is less than six million, which brings the cost of less down to six million, not, not six million, three eleven.
Would it be fair to say that, that what we're doing is, the library came in under budget and we're trying to spend the rest of that money? Is that fair?
That's what we're trying to do.
Well, I think going back to when we were talking Phase One and Phase Two, we were saying the entire budget is probably going to be used up in the library. And we're probably going to be going out trying to raise money for a playground and for some additional amenities. As it turned out, the estimate came in below what we thought it was, the actual bid came in below what we thought the estimate was going to be. So it allows us to not have to go out and raise extra money. The reason we're coming to you tonight and asking you about the gazebo and the parking lot and so forth is that there's no point in spending money to have these designed if you just flat-out don't want them under any circumstances. If you say, "We don't want a gazebo," even spite of the fact that all these plans have always had a gazebo, "We don't want one," there's no point in having a, an architect design a gazebo and then come back to you and you say, "We never did want that." So we're coming to you now with these projects to, to say, "Do you want us to go out and get designs and costs for it?" Then we'll come back to you. So it's really, do you want it or do you not want it?
If the plan's always called for gazebo from Jump Street, why wouldn't it end the bid?
It wouldn't have been in the bid. We pulled a lot out.
We pulled a lot of things out because we were concerned that we were going to run over budget. And when we got down to it, so for example, the sage glass was a, was requested by the library system during design, but because at the time we had an estimate that indicated that that was going to be about a thirty-five thousand dollar add and we were concerned that we were not going to have enough money to build the building, we basically said, "We're not going to put sage glass in." Now, now we have an opportunity, we're going to ask for a proposal for the sage glass and see how it works. And that's true for these other items too. They were talked about, the playground equipment was in the design, we pulled those out probably about seventy-five percent of the way through design, again, because we were concerned that the budget was going to be stretched with the building construction. And that was based upon the estimates that the architect was giving us. One of the things that we benefited from is that it was a very competitive market. We had thirteen general contractors turn in prices on the library here, which is really almost twice what you would expect on a project this size. There was a lot of competition out there. And even with that, the three low bids were all within about sixty thousand dollars of each other. So we got, we got good pricing, competitive pricing. And so the funding that's left over here would have been used in those other areas had we thought, had we been comfortable that we were going to have a bid of six million dollars. We didn't think that that was going to be...
That's my issue, and I'm not against this at all. I'm just saying, I want to make sure we follow the intent of the voters. The intent of the voters was to build a library. It came in under budget, do we add all, now that it came in under budget, do we add the extra?
Well, I think we also, I think we also promised the voters a park. I mean, they weren't giving up the park and the pond and a trail and all of that to have it all put into the library. That's the reason we did the Phase One, Phase Two approach. The plans, I mean, we took the light fixtures around the trail out of the project, thinking out of Phase One, thinking we wouldn't have enough money for light fixtures. So we were really poor-boying, thinking that we weren't going to have enough money. And because the bids came in so low, we are able to do it, and I think you're the one that said it, Congress, or Congressman, yes, Councilman Moore. I just gave you a, yes. But, you know, we've been poor-boying long enough and this is an opportunity to do it right. And this is the opportunity to have an economic generator and really a showplace and something that our community will be proud of. And we never wanted to short-change the children by not having a playground and not having facilities for them. We just didn't know that we would have enough money after we built the library and we might have to find that money later. Now, that isn't the case, so it's a good place to be in.
The only, the only concern that I have is, from people that have come to speak to me, is item two C. Is the only thing that I see...
The restrooms?
...in question are the restrooms because of what the police deal with and what the public works deal with and keeping them cleaned up. And so I've, I mean, I've looked at some things and had some ideas, but spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a restroom seems, I'd rather see that money go somewhere else.
I don't have any idea of what a restroom would cost, but as someone who was the Assistant City Manager over Parks and Recreation, I know a lot about what people do to public restrooms. And so actually, if I show you this next picture, Councilman McCutcheon has to pay me his entire paycheck for this month.
Go ahead and show it to him.
Because he said, "I wouldn't say this word on..." This is a pisois, folks. It's French, but it's pretty durable.
It's a bit near, bit near on that.
You can all vouch, I said that.
What is it? Say that again?
No, I only say it once. You'll have to give me your paycheck. But as you can see, it is concealed from, you know, you can't see in, but it's also open enough that you can get a baby carriage or a wheelchair into it. It's visible from the top, it's ventilated, or from the bottom, it's ventilated from the top and it's pretty iron-cast. So you build them so they are not built for vandalism. Doesn't mean there won't be any, but they're designed that way.
I saw the ones that are out at Lake Hefner, I forget the name of the park, and the awnings that shade parents and grandparents watching their kids play. And the structure, it, it, it was built so that it mirrored all the playground equipment and porta-potties fit inside of them. And I know they have wheelchair-accessible porta-potties.
It's a horse lane too.
And so I'm, you know, in my thinking was, that keeps the public works having to go in there and hose the thing down because you could contract with the, with the porta-potty company and when they get messed up, let them be responsible providing the clean ones. And plus, it's less likely of the activities that I would think the police department doesn't really want another area that they're having to chase people around in.
And that's an option if you want porta-pots in your nice new park.
All you have to do is go down to, to the park that we have in South, South Bethany, the, what's the name of that park?
Nineteenth Park, Gufford Park.
Nineteenth Street Park. And go into restrooms down there, you better be packing because it is not a pleasant place and there's more drug deals go off in there than you can absolutely think. But that is, that is irregardless of that. We, our, our major thrust here on this project was to furnish the City of Bethany with a great library.
And we're doing that.
It was needed, I was one hundred percent for it because our children were not being served as much as they should have been served. And even our adult population uses that library very strongly. When it came in at somewhere around, or less than seventy-five percent of what we said it would come in for, I just was just as pleased as you could possibly be because we can take that twenty-five percent and pay that off on a front-end load and the citizens of Bethany will not be, well, we can, we have to do it from a front-end load. So the first probably three to four years, maybe even five of the payoff on this, we will not have to go to ad valorem tax to get that money. And it'll allow those people to adjust their budgets since many of them are senior citizens and they will be able to have more chance of adjustment than they would if we spend all of that money down to less than a million dollars. And that would be probably somewhere around, around maybe one to two payments or less. And, and that's, I mean, I, I would, I would like to build a beautiful, beautiful park, but I think we can go to the original Plan B that we had if we didn't have enough money to do it with and ask the citizens to come back and maybe... to do it with, and ask the citizens to come back, maybe a bond issue, and put it to them and say, "We wanna do this outside." And we also, we also have a lot of projects in the city of Bethany we just was, was having a discussion with about our water problems. And, and we, we need, we need to address those. I had much rather have drinking water than a statue of a Venus de Milo in front of my, uh, library.
You guys have quite an imagination.
Or, or a banner, a banner across, you know, the, the lighting situation may be a better deal in the fact that the city of, or the municipal library system may not have to spend as much money inside doing drapery and this sort of thing. And they would be able to enhance our library that much more. So I think we need to go back in, in a, and, and address them that we're gonna, if we're gonna spend thirty-five to forty thousand dollars, maybe they should go take that thirty-five to forty thousand dollars that we're covering their windows with and put it into more enhancements inside of our library.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for the approval of Resolution fourteen eighty.
I, I would second that if we remove the restrooms. And we can discuss it later today.
Well, this is just for design.
So we'll spend money on design, but yet, like you said earlier, we'll spend money on design, but it may not get approved.
What's the total cost of the design budget at this point?
We don't know.
See, we, we didn't know.
We don't know what we're going to ask them to do.
So we don't have any idea?
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't know what the total cost of the, of the library was gonna be before we passed our local citizens for eight million dollars. Now, that lets a little egg on my chin, I'm telling you right now.
So of the amount for the design process, does that come out of this nine hundred thousand dollars we have left over?
I'll continue.
So, do we have an estimated cost? Is that gonna be a hundred thousand dollars? Is it gonna be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Withdraw my second.
Are the, are the lights back in on this walking trail?
Yes, good question.
I think that there's actually a couple of things that are gonna help us out here. One is, we have a design contract right now with Dewberry for about six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. It's that first line item that you see there. Those design costs were paid for by the Metropolitan Library System, as you see in the bottom of the page there. That, that line item, that contract with, with the architect right now has about a forty thousand dollar contingency that's in it for design work that was anticipated that might be needed for construction contingency. That's how they came up with that amount of money. And so, I believe that the design fees that we're going to secure from the architect to help us through this first Phase One of Phase Two is, is, is probably gonna be in the range of thirty thousand dollars. And so I think that we'll be able to take that out of their existing contract without any additional cost to the city of Bethany.
Okay, so that's, that's related to which part? The public art, the gazebo, the playground equipment? Uh, what are we talking about, for forty thousand dollars?
They won't have any, they've already done the work for...
That would be for two A, two B, and two C.
They've already included the work for one D and one E, which is the park and the public art. That was in their original contract.
I don't have any problem with allocating funds for the design of two A and two B. I don't think we should allocate funds for some type of plan related to restrooms. And if you, you are telling us that the total cost is gonna be forty thousand dollars out of an existing line item budget, is that correct in the design?
That's my guess. And you, a minute ago, you asked whether or not, we, what, what do we really know for sure? Until that, we, what, what is set up right now, we have tentatively scheduled a meeting with the architect to sit down with the library committee on the thirty-first to go through and tell them what our needs and expectations are. They can't tell us what it's gonna cost to design it until we tell them what we need to design, so...
Well, with all due respect, sir, we're here on behalf of the residents of the city of Bethany, and we can't guess about anything. We need to know the specific amount so that we can allocate funds and spend it wisely. That's why we got elected. So, here we are, and we're gonna approve a, an item where we don't have a specific amount and we're gonna guess?
We're not going to approve. We're not, we're just asking for a proposal from them at this point.
But you're gonna have to pay them for that, correct?
Why don't we, why don't we ask another architect? I mean, why don't, it's a separate deal, why don't we just ask somebody else?
Well, right now, what we have is an architectural group out there, the civil engineer that did all of the pond and detention analysis of the existing park and library is under contract with Dewberry. They have all the drawings for the area.
Sure, this is separate.
The landscape people.
The landscape architect is also, that did the walkway and the lighting around the park, is also a subcontractor of the architect. We have a, an existing contract with Dewberry that allows us to work with them on this.
Allows, but I mean, we're not contractually bound to use them for this.
No.
Okay, if they don't like it at forty grand, maybe somebody else will. Why not ask?
No, but if we bring in somebody else at this point, when we have a contractor out there doing work, and then we have different people going around, I mean, they're building a walking trail, and someone else is going to be doing the playground, or someone else is going to be doing other pieces of it, it's going to get pretty convoluted.
It's not, really, it's just like construction management, you have different trades, different people, I mean...
Well, they have all the trades, yeah.
One of the things that, uh, our leader showed you on the plan was where the playground equipment goes, okay? And at that time that we built the sidewalk that goes around that, we put trees around it, we put lighting around it, it was based upon kind of an assumption of what that playground would look like. Until we can confirm what that playground really looks like, we really can't tell the contractor where to build that sidewalk. We're planning on making adjustments in that sidewalk, in the placement of the trees, in the placement of the lighting. And all that is really something that should be done well by the existing architect, because they have the information there.
And the existing architect has already got six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars?
Well, there's about, the six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars includes roughly a hundred and forty thousand dollars for what they call construction, uh, CA, Construction Administration, so...
Overhead.
No, uh, Construction Administration is, during the construction process, the arch, the contractor provides information to the architect for them to verify that everything is done, and it includes their inspections. They come out to the site, they're scheduled to be out here twenty-four times for their contract. It's not, it's not an overhead.
They're, they're not doing it for free. I mean, we pay them, we're, it's part of what we're paying them.
Right.
And it's not done at cost, I assure you, it's done, was marked up. But why don't we hit them, I think, six hundred and fifty thousand bucks, and they got forty thousand over. They can't do this for forty thousand and make it seven hundred thousand dollars?
You know, it would be kind of like asking somebody to say, uh, you know, "I'll give you a forty thousand for, uh, I run forty thousand for my house. Would you like to see what that house looks like before you give me forty thousand dollars for it?" The architect can't give you a proposal.
Well, that's what we're being asked to do, I think.
Well, no, what we're bringing to you tonight...
We're just getting a proposal.
When, when I say gazebo, for example, I picture something fairly small. You could maybe get four people up there, maybe you could get a table and some chairs to have a little birthday party or something. But it's not a full-blown stage, it's, doesn't have a green room, it doesn't have all these other amenities with it. If that's your definition of gazebo, then we know what to ask for. Um, what I describe to you as a restroom is a one-holer, as we used to say on the farm. And it's small, and one person can get in there, but you could bring in a stroller or a wheelchair. And it's something that can be hosed down, it's not a large restroom with multiple stalls. Uh, when I describe to you, uh, resurfacing the parking lot and adding sidewalks and curbs that would go to these walkways, then we're talking about a specific parking lot. Um, we're not saying design all the parking that might be needed in that vicinity. We're just saying we want sidewalks down College and on Thirty-Fifth, around this area that will be an entrance to the trail and to the park. So, if in that description you say, "Okay, go ahead to the architect, tell them that that's what we want, and have them bring back a plan and bring back what it will cost", then that's what we'll do. What, what I said as we were talking about this is, if we just go to the architect and say, "Design public restrooms," they're going to decide, design something much bigger than what we're talking about. If you say, "We don't, we have restrooms for dogs, but we're not gonna have them for people," um, then we don't need to design any kind of restroom. So, um, you know, I just asked if we could bring this to you before we spend money having something designed that you may not want.
Have we asked, have we asked Dewberry, the architectural firm, what they would charge us to come up with these designs?
We have to tell them what we're wanting them to design first.
Okay, so we'll tell them what we want them to design, and then they will come back and say, "We will spend, it'll cost forty thousand dollars to design all of these projects." Or do we know?
Well, what we had in mind was that they would bring us a design, but if you want to put another step in, I guess we could do that.
So we don't really know what we're paying for, to the extent we're just asking them for a design, and we want them to come up with something and we'll have to pay for it later?
So you would've preferred that we had gone to Dewberry and asked them to design something and then come back to you and said, "Here's what's gonna cost."
No, I think my, an estimated cost to present a design to the city council. We don't know that right now, is that true?
I can't believe, I can't believe there's not a half dozen playground equipment companies that have a, an architect on staff that would love to design it.
It is very easy to buy the playground equipment.
Right.
Um, because it is already made, so we don't have to design playground equipment. We need to know where it goes and what we're willing to pay. Because you can put as many slides off it, you can do different things with playground equipment.
I might, might just mention, and I, let's go back.
Come on over, they need to hear you. They need to hear you at home.
What we're, what we're asking to do right now is very similar to the way we started out with the design of the library two and a half years ago. Uh, when the city, when the city and the Metropolitan Library System met, there was an idea of, of what was needed. It was very broad. It was a new library, it was an expansion to the existing library, it was a library in a different location. It was a very nebulous, uh, idea, but there was a need for a new library. What we did is, we ended up, uh, getting approval from the city council to go out and interview architects. And once we selected an architect, we hired, the city of Bethany hired them for basically what we called Phase One. And that Phase One included numerous meetings with the city, with the library staff, uh, to talk about what was needed, and they came back with a budget that was approved in February of two thousand sixteen, which was the basis for the election in April. And so there was a, there were a number of steps that were taken before we actually identified the total dollar amount that was required. And as a matter of fact, the final design fee for Phase Two of that design process wasn't established until, basically after we knew we had, the bond election had been passed. And that's when we started negotiating with the architect to complete the design work. And so what we're talking about doing right now is really getting kind of a proposal from an architect, sitting down with them, talking with them about ideas, about what, what would fit. We have some limitations of what we can do there. I mean, even if we wanted to build a large, uh, amphitheater, for example, we have some stormwater concerns that prevent us from doing that. And so, that's the need to sit down with the civil engineer, the landscape architect, and the architect to determine what can be done and to see if we can, uh, come back to you here. We're planning on meeting on the thirty-first of this month, and we will, our goal would be to come back to you on the twenty-first of November with very specific information.
Is, is this thing that you're alluding to, that we paid, uh, Dewberry, is that the ninety-five thousand dollars that the city of Bethany took out of its general fund?
Yes.
To pay the, and we're, and the, and the, uh, library fund, or the library bond issue is going to pay the city of Bethany back for that?
Yes. And that's, and that's one of the things that this budget update shows, is that out of the savings, that ninety-five thousand dollars has been reimbursed, will be reimbursed to the city.
That's one A.
You, you see that item there, uh, one A?
It's on page six.
Well, I s, I see a, a fifty-one thousand...
The current, the current budget shows fifty-one thousand, nine twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
And that's...
And then I see another figure over here, ninety-five, four eighty, and you add those two together and it says the A and E.
It's the one forty-seven, yes.
Mm-hmm, one forty-seven. Now, what does that consist of?
Well, the ninety-five thousand dollars is the fee, the design fee that Bethany paid for, for Phase One, which was design work.
We wanted a request for, or proposal from them, and they drew us some one-line drawings and said that this is what we're gonna look like, and...
Right.
And all the pretty pictures that we went out and says, "We're gonna build a Bethany library and it's gonna look like this."
And it did.
And it did. And that's what we wanted.
It's pretty close, yeah.
But, you know, I'm sitting here going, going over this, and now we're beginning to add another million to a million and a half dollars into it.
Well, that's...
And I can't, and I just can't go out to the people in my ward and say, "Hey, we're gonna enhance this by a million and a half dollars." When we could take that million and a half dollars and pay this bond issue down.
No, there, um, this does pay back the city from the bond referendum for that design money. Um, I think what I'm hearing you say, tell me whether I'm hearing you say this. I think you're okay with going ahead with the public art, since that's been in the project all along and that will come back to you. Um, I think we need to keep our promise of returning playgrounds and having that equipment available for the community. Um, I'm not hearing any negative feedback on doing the east parking lot, the sidewalks and the curbs, or even having a design for a small gazebo. And if you don't want restrooms anywhere on the property, then, well, will you want them someday? You know, I don't know.
The restrooms that KP's talking about are very inexpensive for later, we can always add them.
So you just want porta-pots in our new park.
Well, they're very nice, they, he's, he's been...
Elegant porta-pots.
It's not us that doesn't want restrooms. We've, we, most of us have talked to the police officers and, and the chief of police, and they're the experts. They don't want it. The police do not want it, and I would, I gotta trust their judgment.
The library's open from nine AM to nine PM.
I know, and if that's when you jog and...
The park will be closed after nine PM. So, it begs the question, we're, we're putting a bathroom in here for joggers between the time of six-thirty AM and nine PM, and people who have dogs, who walk their dogs in the park, we're gonna spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I've never had to go to the bathroom when I'm jogging, I'm just trying to breathe when I'm jogging.
Um, well, and if you're up in that area having a birthday party, or you've brought a group over from the children's center, do you want to have to take all the kids down to the library to use the restroom? But, I mean, I promise, I will probably never be jogging in the park at seven AM, and I will probably need said restroom. We're just bringing this to you while we're doing design work, to see if you want us to include a design for it. So, give me your pleasure.
Well, evidently, you didn't hear my objections to this, and you said everybody was talking about this.
You're trying to save money.
I feel the city of Bethany has asked for a library. We are furnishing a library. Uh, we, if, if we, if we took in the, the children's playground out, out of the, out of that, we should do a tit-for-tat on that, not a four hundred thousand dollar tit-for-tat. Because I can assure you that I have photographs that show you that we didn't take down four hundred thousand dollars worth of toys in the, in the park. And I don't know how we could get four hundred thousand dollars worth of toys in the park the way it is. And, and, and the, the design, if we're not going to do it, if we're spending money on a design of, of pulling this all together, we're wasting money. We need to pay this down so that the people in the city of Bethany will respect us for taking our word and building them a library, not a...
Now, when we had the public meetings, we had very definite requests and designs and dots put on pictures of playgrounds... and dots put on pictures of playgrounds and of various outdoor amenities. I don't think they thought they were giving up everything in the park in order to get a library. So, but.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sitting down with you. I know I'm stepping out of line.
Hold on just a second, please.
Hold on. I could go either way on the restrooms. I will say, my kids have all used the restrooms at Elden Lion Park in the past, so.
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I said, I could go either way on the restrooms, but my kids have used restrooms at Elden Lion Park in the past, so, and they are usable, so.
Would you stand outside with a gun?
No.
Okay.
Okay, we had a motion from Mr. Todd.
Yeah, this isn't a public hea, this isn't a public hearing item? No, that's what David said.
But there will be later.
But I will move the call to the public up so you can speak as soon as we're done with this particular thing on this. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I, I made a motion for the approval of that, but I'll take the bathrooms out of that motion.
Hold a second, sir.
So, we have a motion and a second for.
The design.
The design, the approval of fourteen-eighty minus two C, the bathrooms.
Correct.
This isn't the public. Now, let's skip down to item five. Call to the public. Remember, please come forward, step, step to the microphone and give us your name and address, and understand that we cannot answer any questions or take any action, but we'd like to hear from you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I've been listening to this discussion pretty much on the library.
I'm sorry, sir, could you give us your name and address?
I live in Bethany, and I have to live in the school district. A lot of people live in Bethany and don't live in the school district.
It's nice to have a neighbor.
I'm not sure which ones are actually my council. I understand everybody wants a new library, we've got to stand up and do this, and ha-ha-ha. But I look out there at the land, because I do a lot of traveling in Bethany. I see a pond that needs to be samed, dug out. We've got wood ducks, pinnails, and a whole bunch of others around here. Now, we've got too many geese, and for some reason, those South American geese die off. There are a couple of them. But, when I look at the property out here, I see kind of a boomerang-shaped library right here on Big Corner. Now, I read books, okay? I can go down to the store, buy one, prove it, because if I lose one, ain't nothing. They've got the iPad, iPod, you know, everybody else on their cell phones all the time reading books. I can't afford to lose my, you know, iPod, whatever, case of the big. But everybody else is going to this. So, in the budget that y'all are talking about, how much of it is download? Borrow the book three days, download it to your phone, you read it before you lose How much of this we're talking about is actually full of books? The other thing I hear is we're going to build this big fantastic park, walk around the pond, this, that, and the other. Somebody needs to figure out where this money is going. Do we really need this big fantastic building of a library? Are you going to put books in it? Are you going to set it up with computers and everything else? And I, I don't know what a lot of your people are thinking. I like books, I read. But technology says books are going out the window, and it's changed.
I think there's actually a little bit of both, books and computers.
And, and download, and, you know.
That, that, I'm not sure.
I mean, the computer's going to cost you, you got to wire this stuff, that's the big major, okay? With buildings, I think you could get by with slightly smaller packages.
Um, I'll tell you that I.
The cage windows, I'm just saying, those are cool, those are really cool. But I like having my, but I can't afford it.
Yeah, I would like to apologize to you, because I'm supposed to turn this timer on for three minutes, and I always seem to forget, so.
Now, you're five and a half already?
Yeah, you're about five and a half, but.
Sorry about that.
So.
But I think we also need, like, protect wildlife. The bathroom thing, I agree. We're a little set upon that. I like fishing over here. If nothing else, it's a relaxation thing, but the fish are about.
You wouldn't eat them.
Thank you.
You don't fish?
No, you wouldn't eat them.
Probably not, because I know all the.
So, why fish?
But it'd be nice to catch one.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Great day for the mayor.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? Okay, let's move back up to item three, Adoption Resolution Number fourteen-eighty-one, approving updates to the municipal court, fine and bond schedule to match current ordinance requirements. Do I have a report or anything on this?
April will give the report on that.
Okay, so, the reason we started this whole bond line was because the PCE's, AFIS fees and forensic fees go up on the number of, I'll have to get that here.
Just have to get right up next to it, I think.
Helps to push the, push the little button. Okay, sorry. All right, so initially, November first is kind of the impetus for all of this. Clete fees, AFIS fees, and forensic fees are all doubling. Those are fees we collect from all of the defendants who come into the courtroom and pass those on to the state, as you saw in the court report. And so, in order to do that, we need to change our fine and bond schedule. But in doing so, it had not been updated since 2015, and so, we discovered several discrepancies in the fine and bond schedule that needed to be corrected. I can, those are highlighted on your copy. I can go through those if you would like. Also, in addition to the discrepancies, that, these are just things that didn't comply with our ordinances, that had gotten overlooked over the years. We had been doubling fines. If you got a ticket for driving with a suspended license or driving without a license, every other moving violation that you would have received would have been doubled. Those doubled fines were then collected for the state, as you saw the line item on the court report, for the trauma care fund and passed along to the state. So, that we didn't keep those doubled fines, all that did was prevent people from being able to bond out of jail. Oftentimes, the judge would reduce those doubled fines at the time they came to court, slow down their ability to pay out, make them come to court more often, make the whole process less efficient. Another kind of excessive fine that we had in place that we have now reduced is the fine for failure to appear, which now comports with the fine that Oklahoma City charges from four-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars to a hundred-and-eighty-five. Those are all just because, on a day-to-day basis, and you're more than welcome to come by tomorrow at eleven, at eight-thirty over on Wednesday morning, and see that, basically, it's a collection docket. People just show up with twenty-five dollars or fifty dollars and pay off two-thousand, three-thousand-dollar fines, which they eventually stop paying because the amount is so enormous they can't do it. And so, they either end up going to jail, which we end up paying forty-seven dollars a day to Oklahoma County, or they just don't show up and we put them on warrant status. Some other fines, Stacy and I went through, the court administrator and I went through a couple of them, and just kind of corrected some of the fines or made, adjusted them to make them more appropriate for kind of what we're seeing every day. Some, some of the fines were not listed on here on the bind, on the bond fine list, we went ahead and added those. We added court costs to parking violations, because a lot of times, there's a extra, not everybody goes and pays their parking violations the very next day after they get them, but sometimes we have to track people down because they aren't present, and we don't have the signature saying that they would appe, promised to appear, so it does take a little bit of extra personnel time, and so, we, for some reason, we hadn't asked for court costs before on that, so we added that. We had to reduce court costs on speeding one, one to ten over due to the fact that we have Route sixty-six runs right through our town. We are limited by state statute to a fifteen-dollar court cost on that, and that was one of the discrepancies. So, I can go through line by line, or I ask, answer your questions, whatever you'd like, but this is just basically to make sure we're doing everything by the, by the book.
I might mention, April and the court staff spend a lot of time on this. It's done periodically, I think the last time it was done was maybe 2012, somewhere in that range.
Fifteen was the most recent, yes.
But you have to do it periodically, because the state regularly increases the fees so that we're paying our share of state expenses, and the laws change on what we can find on certain cases and kind of cases we prosecute. I'd say generally, this is going to be revenue neutral to the city, it's just more of a housekeeping item.
Well, where are the state statutes referenced in the materials? Are they provided?
Well, the first state statute that, regarding the doubling?
Right.
Okay.
I don't see that, um.
No, it's not. That state statute is forty-seven seventeen dash one oh one F.
And that money goes to the state trauma fund.
But there's an attorney general opinion that actually says municipalities should not be collecting that money for the state trauma fund, and so, and that, that AG opinion is 2005, okay, AG one. Doesn't say we shouldn't be doubling, but if the state statute says we're supposed to double and take that money to the fund, and then the AG opinion says we aren't supposed to send the money to the fund because we're only supposed to be enforcing our ordinances, not state statutes, my question is, should we have been doubling at all?
That's kind of a philosophical issue, too, and let me just briefly tell you my philosophy, and I think April shares this, and when we arrest someone that's driving under suspension, our intention is to get them legal to drive, because if they don't have a driver's license, if it's suspended, they're not going to have insurance, and I figure they might run over a million eggs. So, I think it's important that we give people an opportunity to get themselves legal, and that's kind of the attitude I've always had with those driving under suspensions, and when you, when you double the fines that are associated with that, a lot of times, that just keeps the people from becoming legal to drive, and then.
They get into a hole they can't get out of.
That's kind of the philosophy we've always used there.
And, and so, what happens is, they may have a three-thousand-dollar fine, we will never see that. We'll see them for two or three months where they might show up, and then they've lost the one job they had because they had to keep coming to court every month and show up and sit here for four hours and miss their job. They can't drive, there's no public transportation, and so, to get here, they have to get a ride or illegally drive or walk, and then they sit here all day, they, they get a continuance for the next month, they're not working at well-paying jobs to begin with. And so, it's just kind of this over and over and over again situation where you can have one traffic ticket for a hundred dollars, they don't show up to pay that, now they've got a warrant for their arrest, and now they've got their license suspended, now the next time they get picked up, that DUS is a five-hundred, well, four-hundred-and-ninety-nine-dollar fine. The DUS is a four-hundred-and-ninety-nine-dollar fine, and every other ticket, because with their, if they're driving without a license, they don't have insurance, they usually don't have their tag up to date, and they're usually speeding through a school zone or something like that, and so, by the time you get them back in, they've got fifteen-hundred to two-thousand dollars in fines. Whereas if it wasn't doubled, it might be twelve-hundred and, or nine-hundred or something that they could actually borrow from grandma or something and get that paid down, do some community service. David Buchanan's been using a lot of our defendants, putting up Christmas, getting ready to put up Christmas lights, he's looking for people, but you can only do so much community service. And so, it's just, it's not that we're not, you know, Stacy and I have talked about it a lot, we spend more time paying prosecutors and judges and court staff to try to squeeze out twenty-five dollars a month from these people, or fifty dollars a month, or sometimes nothing, to the, to the effect that end up paying forty-seven dollars a day for them to go and serve their time in jail. So, we think if it's a more reasonable amount, they can post bond, they won't stay in our jail, they'll be able to get back to work, not lose their jobs. A lot of times, the bond is so high, they can't post bond to get out and get back to work, and they lose their job. So, our hope is that this will keep the bonds at a more reasonable level, they can make bond, get back to work, come to court, pay their fines, and go on with their lives, and get their license reinstated and not have these issues. I ran into a lady today at Walmart, I see her all the time, she's so happy, she's, she's came up to me, she's like, "Hey, court lady, I got my license back, it cost me like fifteen-hundred dollars," but, I mean, but it's like, it's like they graduated from a, you know, PhD program somewhere. I mean, it's that hard, because not only do they have us, they have Oklahoma City if they've got tickets, or DPS, and so, it's just a, we're just trying to make it something that they can get on with their lives and be citizens with insurance and not causing more trouble.
Thank you.
April, I've got a couple of questions. I, I've read over this whole thing, and the first one was, it's seventy-two point one two, it says negligent parking. What is a negligent parking? I don't understand what that is.
Sure, seventy-two point what?
Seventy-two point one two.
Okay. Negligent parking pursuant to the ordinance that this council passed at some point in the past, is no person shall park, cause to be parked, stop, or leave unattended any vehicle as follows, in a careless or negligent manner, in a manner as to endanger life, limb, person, or property, in a manner as to endanger or interfere with a lawful traffic, traffic or use of the streets. So, basically, if it's a vehicle that's being left out somewhere that's going to cause another person to have an issue, but maybe not specifically in a no parking zone, or in a place that's marked, or handicapped, or something like that, it's just kind of a catch-all for negligent parking.
Maybe three feet from the curb or something on a street, you know.
The other was seventy-one point zero eight, passing on the left, passing a ve, I mean, if I'm in the right lane, I want to pass somebody, I pass them, I, I don't understand that one.
Seventy-one point zero eight. You're supposed to pass on the left at a safe, okay, I'll give it to you. The driver of a vehicle overtaking another vehicle proceeding in the same direction shall pass to the left thereof at a safe distance and shall not again drive to the right side of the street or roadway until safely clear of the overtaken vehicle. Except when overtaking and passing on the right is permitted, the driver of an overtaken vehicle shall give way to the right in favor of the overtaken vehicle or an audible signal, and shall not increase the speed of his or her vehicle until completely passed by the overtaken vehicle. You are supposed to pass on the left, that's state law, we copied that from a state ordinance, state statute.
Okay, but I, I understand that, but it's listed here, and there's a fine for passing on the left.
Well, that's just the way it goes in the DigiTicket, that means you failed to pass on the left. This is a shorthand version, so whenever they put in, that's their code.
That's just a caption of that section.
So, when the police officer puts in the code for it, he does, he may not put in the ordinance, he puts in the, the tag. You don't get a ticket for passing on the left, you're supposed to.
Next time you see an officer passing on the right.
Well, I don't recommend that.
April, I've got a question. Are you aware of any negligent parking in a one-way in the city of Bethany?
We have a, we have a violation for parking in a one-way.
I would make a motion to approve Resolution fourteen-eighty-one.
I second it.
Please cast your votes. Please cast your votes. Item four, Adoption Resolution Number fourteen eighty-two, awarding bid of reconstruction of the fire department concrete drive and ramp paving to Conley Construction as being the lowest responsible bidder and rejecting the bid of the lowest bidder, Lincoln Roofing, as not meeting the bidding requirements pertaining to bid bond and pertaining to identification and certification of bidder. Chief Hunter, do we have a report? I've seen you patiently sitting here all night long.
I'm worn out. Uh, I would be glad to answer any questions. I just want to emphasize in the narrative how important it is that we get this project going, get it done before bad weather. We have Conley Paving is probably the most well-known paving contractor in the state. They've been here a hundred and ten years. I have the utmost confidence in their abilities to do this job quickly, efficiently, and get the longevity out of this project that we need.
Is this important to allow the fire department to do their job in the city of Bethany?
Absolutely.
So it's imperative we get this done?
Absolutely.
I make a motion to approve resolution number fourteen eighty-two.
Please cast your votes.
I have a question, is it too late for a question?
No.
No. Does that have to do with traffic laws or anything?
You better answer, ask me something I can answer.
Is this the entire apron from the garage doors to the street? Or is that just that section, it is up close to the street that's broke up real bad?
No, you'd have to take a better inspection of that. You can see that big spot in the road, but we've got total failure of about five thousand square feet, which is, encompasses the entire ramp.
Okay, thank you.
Please cast your votes.
One other question, is purely, uh, did you have a bid, did you have a bid conference with this? Because I see one of these bidders was rejected because of a number of deficiencies within his bid.
They were, they were, could have shown up at a bid conference. We only had one company that showed up to the bid conference. That's not unusual on a project this size. You're not gonna get every contractor that bid to show up. Now, I mean, that was out of my control. The city clerk, myself, Deputy Chief Jennings, and I'd have to look at my notes to see when we look at. Rudy Construction Center representative, but that was the only representative that was at the, the meeting.
But I'm, before, you know, when they, there's a, uh, complete the bid, bid proposal form, you know, there's, no, 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 but he was twelve, twelve thousand dollars less.
Well, if we investigate this a little further, he failed to turn in a bid bond first.
Okay.
There was, uh, some variation in the bidder and the bidder's names. We come up with about three names, we're trying to find out who this guy is. I spent days researching him.
You did, you did the right thing, I was, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yes, sir, there was a lot of due diligence done before the decision was made. We, I would have loved to take the low bid, but he was not the most responsible bid, by any means. He, he was the low bidder, but, no, he was not the most responsible bidder.
He's about twenty percent low.
Well, I could have probably got some people to even get lower than that, but we may have been left with a product. You know what you get for-
I, I understand that.
You've been in the plumbing business long enough to know what you get for a low bidder, right?
Yeah, low, low, but low bidders are low headaches or, you know, I mean-
I have, like I said, I'll say that again, paving, Conley Paving is probably the, the best contractor in the state.
Four old, four old bunch of people, yeah.
I'm very surprised that they came in as the second lowest bidder. I was very pleased but surprised.
I am, I'm very, I was very pleased with that.
Tickle me to death.
Please cast your votes.
Thank you.
Skipping over the call to the public, we'll jump to item six, City Attorney's Report.
All my items are listed on the agenda.
Item seven, City Manager's Report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a few things for you tonight. The first is, I, I wanted to update everyone. It's been a while since I've reported on the progress of our various committees that we have set up. The cemetery committee is, uh, making, is, is going like gangbusters right now. They're, they are working on plans and ideas for, uh, updates for the cemetery. They're right now focusing on obtaining cost information. I, I'm hoping and anticipating perhaps they might present a report as early as December for you. The arts and culture continue to move forward on developing a program for promoting and accepting art in Bethany. The Parks and Recreation Board is currently working on Bethany parks, and Elden Lion is their first park that is, uh, what they're gonna be addressing first. The Bethany Economic Development Authority has recently completed two economic development trips, uh, one to the village and the other one, uh, just last Friday to the city of Manford. And now they're coming back and going to be focusing on Bethany things armed with ideas and, uh, practices that they have learned from other communities. The branding and logo task force is currently meeting with groups within the community of Bethany. If you are aware of any organization in our community that you think the branding and logo committee ought to talk to, and what they're talking to them about is getting ideas from them on where we are as a community, where we're going, and, uh, what types of things that they believe but best represents our community. So it's really great stuff. They are really down in the weeds, doing a lot of homework. The Charter Review Committee, I believe, has reviewed now, at least gone through the, the full litany of items that you all presented to them as ideas for them to take a look at, and are now delving down to the details of the specifics of each one of the issues and what kind of positions that they will take on those, and if they're going to rise to the top of actually making it to be a recommendation to you all or not. Um, at the last council meeting, switching gears, at the last council meeting, I was asked a couple of questions. I wanted to follow up with you all, uh, as, it's, uh, interesting information. Uh, I was asked about the sidewalk and bike path budget of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if we had been spending that down. And, uh, all the items, uh, I believe I did report, but I did confirm that all the, uh, projects that we have done to date have been done in-house, of course. And so we're charging those and have charged those to our operational labor and maintenance and supply accounts. So we have not yet touched that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars and trying to keep that, uh, fully in place. So when we are, and when you all are ready for us to go out to bid, then we'll have those monies in place to be able to do that. The second and kind of related question was, we're utilizing in-house and also we're utilizing temp services for some of the work that we're doing. And I have exact numbers for you. In the sanitation department, depending, we, we've been between four to five temp employees that we've utilized in that department. We have one in the water treatment plant, one in the utility division. We have three in parks, and we're utilizing nine in streets. And the question was, well, is that costing us more money? Actually, not at all, it's actually saving us money. Uh, this is a quarterly number I'm gonna give you, uh, to date. And those, and the budgeted items for labor in those departments I just mentioned were one hundred and thirty thousand dollars under budget. So I think that has turned out to be a really good use of that type of personnel. Especially this first came on, uh, two, two ways. One was with sanitation, with us potentially looking at switching to an automated service for our sanitation and trash pickup services. It really didn't make a lot of sense for us to go out and hire, uh, a lot of new people to replace those that had left the organization. So we began utilizing, uh, temp services for those, and that's worked out really well. And then continued on into some of the sidewalk work that we have done as well. We, I'd like to quickly wish the mayor good luck on his endeavor to, uh, move on to the Oklahoma Municipal League Board of Directors. I hope you're successful with that. I think that will be a great benefit to this organization, to this governing body and to this community, uh, to have that kind of representation. So thanks for being willing to take that on. The final thing, I always gave you an update on code enforcement, so here's the new numbers. As of this week, we are up to one thousand ninety total notices of violations that have been issued, two hundred and fifty-two in Ward one, three sixty-five in Ward two, two hundred and forty-two in Ward three, and two hundred and thirty-one in Ward four. Uh, of those, only, well, one hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand and two have been closed, and only seven remain non-compliant. That's all my reports, sir.
Thank you. Item eight, Councilmember's announcements, comments and proposals. Tonight, let's start down here with Councilman Palmer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I thought we had a very productive meeting tonight. I would like to, pending the city manager's approval, remind the residents of Ward two that we're having a Halloween Safe Street on College Avenue between Forty-second and Forty-sixth. Uh, pending the manager's approval, um, I'd like to ask for donations of candy. And you can come by my house at forty-four oh one and put them on the porch, uh, so we can have a ton of kids and have a very good event, trick-or-treating. I don't know if you've been there, or if you wanna help me pass out candy, or whatever I can do, or whatever you can do, would be much appreciated. It's a great event, and we have some great kids, uh, and we support the community. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Harris?
Yes, I was pleased to see so many of you at the grand opening of Southern Plaza. And it is now open and filling up. So for those of you who like to badmouth apartments, I would like to remind you that those are apartments. And I enjoy living in one of them at a cost of over two thousand dollars a month, so it's not a slum.
They are nice. Mr. Todd?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Moore?
I'm good, except I don't think their apartments are a lot nicer than apartments.
Mr. Herrick?
I have nothing tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Shire?
Yes, sir. Uh, I want to reiterate, the complex is just north of us here. I attended an opening last week, and it is a first-class place. I wish we could have several more in the city of Bethany to provide adequate and a, a much better place for our older citizens to live out their older years. And I, I think we, we should look forward to that when we begin to push on our comprehensive plan. That's all I have.
Thank you. I would also like to say, what an awesome day with the Southern Plaza grand opening and extension and the children's center. I think it's great times in, in our great city. Item nine, do we have any new business? No new business. I declare us adjourned until November seventh, two thousand seventeen. Called to order the Bethany Public Works Authority. Item one is a consent docket, AMB. Do I have a motion for approval?
Sure approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is new business, is there any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until November seventh, two thousand seventeen. I called to order the Bethany Hospital Trust. Item one is the consent docket, AMB. Do I have a motion?
Sure moved.
Please cast your votes. Item two is new business, do we have any new business? No new business, I declare us adjourned until November seventh, two thousand seventeen. I called to order the Bethany Development Authority. Item one is consent docket, AMB. Do I have a motion?
Sure moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item two is new business, do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until November seventh, two thousand seventeen. And with that, we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.